Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop. Member Schaaf is absent.
And I ask you to please stand for silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Hey, we got a text from Kathy. She wanted to recognize, she's missing today, she wanted to recognize Edward Kaczynski's family. It's a family friend of hers that she lost, longtime Erie resident, and so she wanted him to be acknowledged today during our moment of silence.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the March 19th meeting and bills for payment on April 4th and 11th. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaaf, Titus, nope, no Schaaf, Troop, and Witherspoon.
We have no presentations today. Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Hearing none? We're open for public comment. Anyone wishes to address council, please step to the mic, give us your name and municipality.
Good morning. Keith Hammer, live in the city of Erie. I'd like to make some comments on you trying to rule the 80 percenters and the 3D printer. I have some papers here for the seven of you guys if you guys want it. But as we already know that, you know, we have the Act in Pennsylvania where no city, municipality, township, or county is allowed to overrule the state, and the state deems that we are allowed to have these as of time being. We already know that Philadelphia, that you're trying to base this off of, is already going to, the PA Supreme Court is already holding this case. They already accepted to hold it. Philadelphia's already been denied the AR ban they tried in the state of Philadelphia. I have the Act right here that prohibits the city from doing this. It's all given to you guys. It just states that the state of Pennsylvania has the high court on there and no city municipality, thank you, can change or override that. Not only with the 3D printers too. I mean, it's a hobby for a lot of people. They're already on the fifth annual competition for this. So it's a hobby, you know. I have one, obviously. If it gets voted, I have to destroy it, just like my bump stock I had. I had to destroy it under Donald Trump. And then Biden said, oh yeah, I can have it, but I've already destroyed it, so my money went to waste it. So I know you guys are worried about like safety and stuff, but we need to focus more like on crimes that are actually hurting people. There's only been two cases that I can find in the city of Erie where they've had so-called ghost guns. One was a kid that was playing with it, and it went off, and tragically, he died. The other one was a cop when they found it, and they say, they think it was linked to different cases. That was the only two cases that I can find. But, you know, we talk about safety. We look at the rise of DUIs. I mean, I think I gave you some in there, but yet, city totes about how great the crime has gone down. So not only have firearm crimes come down, but DUI crimes have come up. So we need to start focusing on things that are actually impacting more people instead of stripping more rights away. I mean, people like myself are out work right now. You don't have the criminals in here voting for, you know, there's not going to stop any criminal from doing what they want to do. It's just, just like when you had the Act of banning in the state parks in Pennsylvania, and which was overturned. I just wanted, you know, like I said, we look at the crime rates, especially like the fatalities, the incidents of DUIs, but yet we're focusing on something that it's not really affecting that much. Every lost life is a tragedy, don't get me wrong. And for me, it's a hobby, you know. We got the competitions, and it's fun, it's a community. You know, like I'll make mine, I go to my mom's house, and I'll sit there and watch she scrapbooking, I'll paint mine up, and, you know, we just work together. But I just wanted to bring up the fact that, you know, I spoke with, I can't remember his name, but a member of the GOA, and, you know, like they said with the Philadelphia, they're willing, you know, if this passes, go to the PA Supreme Court, there'll be another one. And it's just, I find it a waste of taxpayers' dollars. We need to be focusing on things that are more important, you know, let's bring the community back together. That's really all I have to say, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Craig Storrs. I'm the executive director of Pennsylvania Gun Rights. I'm here representing my members and supporters that live in the city of Erie, opposing this ghost gun ban. Now, I want to be clear that this ordinance is exactly what it sounds like. It's a gun ban, which, as the previous speaker just mentioned, is prohibited by state law, which is Title 18, Section 6120. No city, as he cited to you, no city, county, township, municipality, nobody can override state law on this. Furthermore, this also violates the Pennsylvania Constitution. Article 1, Section 21, very explicitly says, "The right of the citizens to bear arms in defense of themselves in the state shall not be questioned." But let's go even further than that. The Supreme Court of the United States has even weighed in on ghost guns just last week, okay, in Bondi versus Vanderstock. Whether I like the ruling or not, whatever I think about the ruling or not, it's the ruling that we have, okay? And this says that the Biden rule, that treating ghost guns as the same as firearms is within the confines of the Gun Control Act of 1968. So ghost guns are firearms, per federal law. So therefore, we need to then look at Title 18, Section 6120 for the definition there, okay, because federal law supremacy clause there. Okay, so if ghost guns are firearms, then under state preemption law, you can't regulate them. I don't care if they're unfinished, I don't care if they're taken apart or anything like that, or if they're just parts on a table. You can't regulate them. And as the Supreme Court said in Vanderstock, Justice Gorsuch said about just an unfinished frame being considered a firearm, he said, "When you look at it, what else would you call it?" He said, "Think about the novelist with her manuscript, calling her manuscript a book." Or think about your friend with his IKEA kit, calling it a table before it's even put together. What else would you call it? But also, you've got to understand that the state Supreme Court has also weighed in on preemption as well. Just last year, they ruled unanimously, despite a 7 to 2 Democrat majority on the court, that preemption is constitutional. So, and that was despite a challenge by Philadelphia to overturn that. Now, there is a pending lawsuit on this very issue before the state Supreme Court, and that's, as he mentioned, Philadelphia's ghost gun ban. They just accepted it, and they're in the briefings stage of this, and it's going to be, I used to be a civil litigation paralegal. So, and the lawyer that I worked with did a lot of appellate work with the Commonwealth Court, the Superior Court, and the Supreme Court. And his rule of thumb was, when waiting on one of these rulings, you're looking at a year to a year and a half before you get a state Supreme Court ruling. So I would encourage restraint here today on this ordinance, because my organization is very seriously considering whether or not this is something we want to litigate in light of what's currently going on in front of the state Supreme Court, as well as what's going on coming down from the federal Supreme Court. And, I mean, all of this legal talk to say is that ghost gun bans are still legally questionable. And this ordinance, yes, it's, it may be viewed as small and common sense, and a, and I understand the feelings behind it. I don't, crime is a horrible, horrible scourge. But I took a look at Erie's crime records just last night with the Pennsylvania Uniform Crime Reporting through the state, and your violent crimes, homicides, rapes, aggravated assaults, manslaughter have gone down consistently over the past couple of years. So Erie cannot infringe on the right of your citizens, your residents, to bear arms, and that includes these ghost guns. I urge you guys to wait, at least, until the state Supreme Court has a chance to weigh in on this. Otherwise, you're going to end up costing yourselves lengthy litigation and massive amounts in tax dollars fighting this in court. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other?
Morning. My name's Don Messmer. Lived in the city of Erie for 51 years. And as both gentlemen before me spoke, I agree completely with them. This is just pretty much a blatant infringement on our rights. And I just think you should seriously consider the ramifications of what could come from this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Someone's coming to the podium.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Again, name is Carlos Mora, Natty 95 Perry Highway. I'm here just to show support on the question whether to sign the current form of government. I think we all agree that our way of government is not perfect. It's good, but it's not perfect. And I think we shouldn't wait, wait until asking the question of whether things could be improved or not. Besides that, thank you so much for doing your work. Thank you so much for the people who show up for our forum. And we're going to be sending invitations for a future town hall hosted by ECU. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, we'll continue with the agenda.
Ordinance says for final passage, Council File Number 16507, Official Ordinance 182025, An Ordinance Amending Part VII General Offenses to Establish Article 723 Entitled "Unlawful manufacture of firearms," to add definitions, to add additional prohibitions on use of three-dimensional printers, to impose prohibitions relating to the transfer, use, or conversion of unfinished firearms and certain equipment, the manufacture of firearms, and to prescribe additional penalties for violations of this article. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16507, and now known as Official File Ordinance 182025, be finally passed by City Council.
Mr. President.
Councilman.
I don't know about you folks, but I probably have upwards of 20 emails the past week bringing up reasons to not go forward with this. I realize it's much ado about nothing. I said that at the last meeting when I was interviewed, that I talked to Chief Police, he said it's another tool in the toolbox, but it doesn't really amount to anything. I would be much in favor of what was submitted to us earlier, that we actually table this until we get a Supreme Court ruling. This way, we're not going to be liable if we're out of sorts. And if we are, then I'm going to have to say no to this, I guess is what I'm saying. I would prefer a table if I could try that. Mr. President, I have to have a second for it. I don't know if I have a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Motion to table, Members Brzezinski, Flores?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Titus?
No.
Troop? Witherspoon? Motion to table fails, 3 to 4. 3 to 3. 3 to 3. I'll get there. So we're voting on the ordinance. Members Brzezinski?
No.
Flores? Nelson? Titus? Troop?
No.
Witherspoon?
No.
Ordinance fails to pass, 3 to 3.
Mr. President, explaining what happened, because we're looking at faces. The ordinance did not pass, didn't get to table, but it's dormant for the time being.
Ordinance File Number 16508, Ordinance Number 192025, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $19,900 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Provide for the Expenditure thereof for Purchase of the Gulf Course Equipment. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16508, and now known as Official File Ordinance 192025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 192025 Finally by Yea Six Nay Zero. Council File Number 16509, Official Ordinance 202025, An Ordinance Amending Codified Ordinances of the City of Erie, namely Article 330 Landlord and Rental by Amending Subsection 33003B2, Residential Rental Unit Registration Required to Modify the Rental Registration Requirements to Update the Rental Registration Process and Procedure to Enhance and Improve the Health, Safety, and Welfare of Residential Renters Inside the City of Erie, and to Enhance and Improve the Quality of Residential Housing for Renters Inside the City of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16509, and now known as Official File Ordinance 2025, be finally passed by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance 2025 Finally by Yea Six Nay Zero. Council File Number 16510, this is for first reading. An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $5 Million from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof for Upgrades to the Experience Erie Children's Museum Facility to be Completed as a Subgrantee. Pass-through funding is provided from the Pennsylvania Development, Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program RACP grant. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16510 Have Been Read is Hereby Adopted on First Reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16510 by Yea Six Nay Zero on First Reading. Council File Number 16511, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $80,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue to Be Received from the Enterprise Zone Revolving Loan Fund for Utilization in the Flagship Commodore Fund. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16511 Have Been Read is Hereby Adopted on First Reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16511 by Yea Six Nay Zero on First Reading. Council File Number 16512, of the City Council of this city of Erie, the City Determining to Incur Lease Rental Debt Evidenced by the Guaranteed Revenue Bond or the Maximum Principal Amount of $3,233,574, to be Authorized and Issued by Erie City Water Authority in Connection with the Construction, Alteration, and Improvements to the Public Water Distribution Facilities in and About this City, Including but Not Limited to the Customer-Side Galvanized Service Line Replacement Project, Phase 1, and Paying Related Costs, Fees, and Expenses, Specifying the Realistic Useful Life of the Project, Authorizing and Directing Appropriate Officers of the City to Make, to Take Certain Actions, and to Execute Certain Documents, including a Guarantee Agreement between the City as Guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority, and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, Approving the Form, Maximum Guaranteed Amounts, and Sources of Payment of the Guarantee Agreement, Creating a Sinking Fund in Connection with Such Guarantee Obligations, and Appointing a Sinking Fund Depository, and Providing for the Repeal of All Inconsistent Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the Council File Ordinance Number 16512 Have Been Read is Hereby Adopted on First Reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council Read and Adopt Council File Ordinance 16512 by Yea Six Nay Zero on First Reading. Council File Number 165- Council File Number 16513, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $400,000 from unappropriated fund balance in the Liquid Fuels Fund for the expenditure thereof. Funds will be used for the 2025 streets paving. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the council file ordinance Number 16513 have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16513 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16514, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $400,000 from unappropriated fund balance in the paving and sewer revenue funds for the expenditure thereof. Funds will be used for the 2025 streets paving. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the council file ordinance 16514 have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon.
Mr. President.
Councilman.
I gotta give a dad a boy or a dad a girl to the administration. They are aware that the streets are in pretty bad shape, and this is our way of moving money around to get more money to fix those streets. If you haven't had a job break and pothole to hit, you will, so be careful until we get it fixed. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16514 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16515, an ordinance amending Article 101 by adding subsection 101(c), authorizing a referendum on the question of studying the existing form of government and considering the advisability of the adoption of a home rule charter for the City of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, that council file ordinance 16515 have been read, is adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16515 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council File Ordinance 16516, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Erie, namely Article 951 residential refuse by adding or amending certain subsections to modify the refuse fees for properties with excessive garbage and/or waste, to update the refuse fees for properties with excessive garbage and/or waste, to enhance and improve the health, safety, and welfare of residential properties inside the City of Erie, and to enhance and improve the quality of residential housing inside the City of Erie. Sponsored by Councilmember Titus, seconded by Councilmember Nelson, the council file ordinance Number 16516 have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16516 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16517, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the purchase of LED lighting upgrades. Sponsored by Councilmember Brzezinski, seconded by Councilmember Troop, the council file ordinance Number 16517 have been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance 16517 by yea six nay zero on first reading. Council President, this takes us to new business.
Move to those.
Second?
Second.
Is that okay?
Are there any separations? Number two.
Of new business?
Are there any other separations? Lauren?
Voting on moving the balance of the agenda, members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. Resolution Number Two, sponsored by Councilmember Nelson, seconded by Councilmember Flores. Resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that Erie City Council designates the 1,000 block of West 30th Street as Carter Storachi five times' way to commemorate Erie's own wrestler, Carter Storachi, after winning an unprecedented fifth NCAA Division I individual wrestling championship. Discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to congratulate Carter. Since last meeting, he won a fifth national title. He will be the only person in college history to ever do so. We have a street renaming ordinance where every city councilman gets to pick, member gets to pick two people that have applied to rename a street after them, and I'm using my second one to rename it after this young man. It's incredible. We've been discussing a little bit, there's like another family of wrestlers in Erie that as brothers have won more national titles than anyone in the history of college wrestling. There's two sets of brothers that have done that, the Cars from Erie, as well as the Brands, they've each won five, and now the Storachi brothers have won five, but only one of them wrestles. So this is an unprecedented thing. I'm using one of my two namings after that. You know, we'll vote on it today, and if it passes, then when he gets back to town from college, we will do a big thing of it. There's even talk of maybe giving him the key to the city. So let's, I say we, I think a parade is in order. You know, I think it's a matter of doing as much as we can to acknowledge the way that this young man has represented our city and the honor that that brings our city. So, big congratulations to Carter Storachi.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, yeah. I actually, congratulations to Carter also. He grew up wrestling with my sons. My middle son is actually the same age, they wrestle in the same tournaments, so I've been watching him since he was five years old, you know, the family. This is like one of the first ones I've actually seen debated, because we do have an ordinance, and it does talk about, somebody has to have like accomplishment for a long time in our city. You know, they've fed people for 30 years, or they've clothed people for 40 years, or took homeless people for 40 years, or, so it talks about specific accomplishment in our community. Maybe they were a firefighter, or something like that. The ordinance really doesn't talk about somebody who accomplishes like one, you know, something, a great accomplishment. Okay, and I'm, and I'm, I want to see Carter recognized because I realize the greatness of his, what he's done. But me being an athlete myself, also growing up in the city, I know that we have had other athletes that were great also. I'm gonna name a few. Freddie Blitnikoff. The Wide Receiver Award that the Division I Colleges give away is named after him. So any receiver who is the best receiver in the country, they get an award called the Blitnikoff Award. Okay, Bob Sanders, he was the only person from Erie to be named the NFL Defensive Player of the Year, and probably should have been the Super Bowl MVP, they gave it to Peyton Manning. Mark Stepnowski, academic All-American, two-time Super Bowl champ, All-Pro, Hall of Fame. The Carr Family, probably the greatest wrestling family ever in the United States. When you watch the Division One tournaments, they talk about the Carr Family every year. And in fact, some of those guys in the family, like Jimmy and Jerry, they actually came back to our community and served as wrestling coaches for a long time at different schools and things like that, so they actually served the community. I can name a couple more. What about some of our WNBA athletes? We have one right now, one of the McBride sisters. Cliff Crosby, Javon Johnson, Dietrich Gels, they all grew up on East 18th Street, and they all came from the same neighborhood, they all played in the NFL. Mike McCoy, right, second guy, the second pick in the NFL Draft, played 10 or 12 years, was All-Pro. I mean, there's so many athletes, I wish there was a way we could just honor them all at once, so then we wouldn't have to argue about who gets it and who doesn't. If we had like a street where we just named it after all the athletes, and then they would know that's how they're getting recognized. So that's just what I wanted to say about this, and congratulations to Carter and his family, and his parents, which I keep saying, his parents took him across the country, you know, for years and years and years, to tournaments and things like that, so I always say, give them credit too. So that's what I wanted to say about it.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Everything that Mr. Troop says, I agree with. Bottom line is, what Carter did accomplish is a real feather in the bonnet of the City of Erie. That's why we were hoping and planning on giving him the key to the City of Erie, not a metal sign that's gonna hang on a telephone pole until some smart-ass kid knocks it off. Not to demean it, but I think, again, it's premature. Speaking from experience in the past, there are tons of people that have done wonderful things for our city, but they never have had a street named after them. The key to the city is something that this young man will be able to hold and show his children and his grandchildren as the years go by. And because of that, I would like to try to table this until we get all the information. If the family wants to do both, then we'll talk to Mr. Storachi more. Right now, I think, once again, it's something that should have been thought out more completely rather than making it a political ha-ha here. Motion to table.
There's been a motion to table?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to table, Councilmember Brzezinski, Flores.
No.
Nelson.
No.
Titus.
No.
Troop. Witherspoon. Resolution fails to table because it's a tie, three to three. Voting on the resolution.
Is there further discussion? May I offer one more thing?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Hey, I just want to be clear that the timing of this is that he won this since the last tournament. This was discussed last year after he won his fourth title, because he was only the sixth person in history to win a fourth one, and we didn't do anything with it last year with the fourth one, because there was a question of a fifth year of eligibility, and he was taking a swing at getting a gold medal. But he banged up his knee and didn't quite put in the summer performance. So this has been discussed for about a year now. I made a mistake on the, you know, we, I'm looking forward to getting everyone in the council involved whenever he gets back from school and we acknowledge him. And as I said, I want to do all of the above. I've also talked to the family, so this is, as far as what we can do to acknowledge them, you know, they are enthusiastic to finally get some acknowledgement from the city. You know, if you're familiar with college athletics, like there's NIL deals nowadays, and none of the businesses in Erie are supporting him right now. All of his NIL deals come from east of Pennsylvania and State College, so I'm looking forward to this hopefully passing, so that we could give a kid something that frankly he has not gotten the acknowledgement of in these last five years that he's won national titles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, once again, if we're gonna honor this young man, maybe we can do both things at the same time. Because of that, I'm going to be a no vote. Not because I love Carter, don't get me wrong, I've known him since he was a student at prep, and he deserves every accolade that we can give him, but not just a one sign. It's not enough. If we're gonna do it, let's do it right, let's get that key to the city, and if the street naming wants to be a part of it too, I don't have a problem there, but I don't want to just make it one and bring it back for another thing. Let's keep it one beautiful ceremony.
We'll need some time to print the sign.
Will you acknowledge?
Gentlemen?
I don't hear what you said.
I said, may I be acknowledged then, sorry? We'll need some time to print the sign.
Any further discussion? Lauren?
Voting on the resolution, members Brzezinski.
No.
Flores. Nelson. Titus. Troop.
No.
Witherspoon.
No.
Resolution fails to pass with a tie vote of three to three. I believe this takes us to committee reports.
Councilwoman.
Alrighty, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a little bit of a report. We had an Environmental Advisory Council meeting this past March 26 at 3:00 PM. Those are held here at City Hall Chambers. You have the ability to re-watch any of our public meetings on our YouTube or our Facebook, so if you missed those because you're at work, I definitely recommend that you, in your leisure time, it might not be fun, but check those out, because some of the decisions that are being made are really gonna impact the next 10 to 20 years of our city's future, so I'd really recommend that if your invested interest is the City of Erie, to pay attention to those things. We have a historical review commission meeting this coming April 7, and we have a zoning hearing meeting as well this April 8. That'll be held at 1:00 PM. I believe the historical meetings are at 3, but I have to double-check that time. And on April 4, our Sea Wolves are having our home opener for us here in the City of Erie, it's a 6:00 PM game. A lot of us council members and other elected officials will be at the game because we try to show support. They did just win their second championship, so we're really proud of our guys. We also wanted to mention, I work with the autistic and intellectually disabled community, so April 1 through the 30th is National Autism Acceptance Month. A lot of people disregard our community with intellectual disabilities, and I'm just here to tell you that they have the right to live fulfilling lives with the supports that they need to do that, and if you give them the supports that they need, they can excel beyond your limitations. So do not limit people, give them the supports that they need so they can be their full selves. I also wanted to say that with the season warming up, we do have a pothole repair hotline. That phone number is 814-870-1740. Please give exact location. 1340? Okay, so 870-1340. And please give exact locations and the street name, just because as a community, we can get these streets more drivable. I know my car has taken a beating, and I just got new tires and a new alignment, and that is not fun, so every time I hit one, I'm not the happiest person. We also have large item pickup. The community is used to us doing the spring cleanup. We haven't done that in, I want to say, at least 15 or so years. I know that as a child, my grandma looked forward to those few weeks where we could put everything out on the curb and get rid of everything, but that was a lot at one time, and it was really, really stressful for the workers, so they started doing the large item pickup, which you get to request to have three large items put out each trash pickup, so there's no limitation. So just gradually, I mean, who wants to register and get a confirmation? But it's more successful on the worker, but also on you as an individual. If you have a lot of stuff that you want to get out, but maybe you need help doing that, you can just put the three items out once you get the okay, such as sofas, chairs, tables, enough, no electronics though, just big, large items. I see people just put them out there, and they are obstructions on the sidewalk, and we do have a lot of community members who are elderly, physically disabled, and unable to get around our streets or our sidewalks, and then they're in the streets, and we have an uptick of accidents. So as a community, we have to do better to work together and make sure that we're looking out for one another. out for one another. We make Erie great, and we have to remember that. But if we don't have everybody working together, it's not going to be the city that we want it to be. So please make sure we're picking up our litter. Earth Day is April 20. And I want to make sure our city is nice and clean for our lake. Thank you. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much for an excellent report. Councilman Nelson?
The only meeting that I was, of my committee assignments that we had, was an airport meeting. It was a very quick one. The Tampa flight is ending, or maybe even has. It's April 1, I think it has. And the Orlando flight with Breeze is continuing, so you can still hop on that one. And all of the numbers are looking great, so they feel that they have proven themselves, and they're hoping to get the seasonal flights with Breeze again next year. And they have some, there's a trip to DC planned to try to figure out some federal funding to bring in additional flights. So everything seemed very optimistic. It was a quick meeting, though, and that's it for my report.
Thank you very much.
All right. I will make a brief report. Had a lot of meetings with a lot of advocates these past few weeks, but there's just a few that I would really like to highlight. On Monday, met with Chris Gronder from, with the city, a few individuals, one from the landlord association, and two from the Erie Spiritual Coalition, and starting to work on just improving the relationship and the dynamics with renters and landlords in the city. There is a lot of effort that is going to be going into and creating some education classes, creating an alliance and a partnership, so that it's less adversarial. I'm really excited about the discussions that we've started and are continuing to uplift. With that being said, that there's also going to be a movement here coming through with code that I wanted to highlight, and that's creating cleaner and safer neighborhoods, one block at a time. So we're going to, one of the things that we passed today was around some of the fees associated with things that may be issued, if there are code violations, particularly when it comes to like large piles of debris or things being out on the side of the road. This really is around the health and safety and improving, not just the appearance, but the well-being of those who are living in those neighborhoods. So it's going to be going zone by zone, street by street, to have a cleanup. And so I'm really excited for this initiative to start happening. I think it just improves the neighborhood, and it improves the living experience of those in those neighborhoods. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about the study sessions that we have coming up on this, so tomorrow, we have our session with HUD to go over the Department of Economic and Community Development, just the status of some of the monies that are coming in. We also, on the 10th, have one around the status of immigration in the city, and how many of our residents are being impacted. So I want to make sure that we have a strong presence there. And just for clarification, study sessions are really for council to kind of hear and get updates. There's not a back and forth where there's public comment, but we can talk after to kind of help. The public is invited and encouraged to come, so that they can also receive the information that council is receiving. Thank you, Councilor Flores, for bringing up Autism Awareness Month. As somebody who is diagnosed with autism, it is one of those disabilities that people often overlook or don't fully understand. And then on Monday, after we had our meeting here at council, we went, several of us went over to the Trans Day of Visibility. And what is important about this day is it's celebrating our trans lives and accomplishments, and not just the bad things that have happened to us. And so it's a really important night, the 31st, March 31 of every year. We come together and to just uplift one another as a community, especially with a lot of the attacks that we're seeing and the executive orders that are being targeted right now towards the trans community. There's a lot of uplifting that needs to happen. Outside of that, we've got a primary coming up here on May 20, so make sure that you are registered to vote, that your voter registration is updated, so if you've recently moved, that you've changed it, and just know who is going to be on your ballot in the seats that are going to be open. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brzezinski?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's an organization that a lot of people probably know about, but don't think about it too often. I got to take my hat off to the sons of Lake Erie. I want to be careful mentioning names. I will mention Mr. Skribszek and Eddie Kissel as two of the almost co-founders of it. They had a little get-together, probably three quarters of Erie was there, at the Shrine Club this Sunday. We're standing in line outside to get into the place. And they all raised money to give right back to our lake and to our kids. They, I think they said something like fifty-seven different events that they sponsor, from teaching kids how to fish down at the peninsula, to stalking the different creeks to make sure that we have healthy, live fish where they are. I had to bring that in, because it dovetails into my liaison. When you talk about working together, it was kind of funny to see the executive director of the Port Authority in a big white apron, working her behind off. Ms. Lomsky was right there. She spent the entire day there pushing food around. She didn't have to do that. Anna France, the executive director, was also there doing it. Jackie Bach, another lifetime, he was a policeman with me down at the peninsula. He was running the kitchen, making sure the hot dogs and the other food were coming out. Judge Dave Ridge, he probably doesn't like me mentioning his name, but he was working behind the scenes. Mike Kabisz, I can go on and on. It was a wonderful, wonderful event. And everything that they do and all the money they raise was right back into our lake and our kids. Wonderful program. I mentioned Shannon. Take a look at the duck. We're having new colors, blue and green, on the, we call that the pyramid on the duck there, Mr. Troop? Is that what that is? Anyway, it's a big thing up in the air. The tower, yeah. Remember, Mark Guy Finley had another name for it, which I will leave unsaid. Let me see, I don't make sure, with the Port Authority, again, ongoing, and it will be ongoing for a long time, the plans for the cleanup of the coke plant, because of the things that they pushed forward on. We have a plan now. It's not just a fenced-in area that's getting worse by today. Exciting things going on. With Erie Events, the ongoing conversations between the Erie Events folks and the zoo and us, to figure out what's the best movement forward to, you know, Sugar Coney, it saved the zoo. The zoo's not in very good shape financially. And again, as a city, we're going to try to do the best we can to make it better. Couple things. My baby tigers went to Los Angeles and got killed three times. They could have won two of those games. But they have won the next two in Seattle. And right now, they're in first place with three other teams. The only one that's not in first place is, I think, Minnesota. They started off kind of bad. That's my lead-in. I'll tell you what, if you wanted to have some excitement, I haven't seen the complete roster yet for the Sea Wolves, opening day, Ms. Flores already told us that, is this Friday. I think the game starts sometime around six. They're going to be doing things, raising the championship banner two years in a row. And we've got some good, young talents. I was down in Lakeland, just kind of meandering around, looking and checking, and these guys are for real. Put it on the docket, get there. I'll be there Friday. I hope it's going to be a little bit warmer than it sounded like. And I think, well, I sound like Miss Shoff, huh? You were missing her, I guess. I'm done. I'm sorry. And again, Srachi family, we're not forgetting you. This wasn't about saying no to the Srachi family and to Carter. We're just going to do it bigger and better. We're going to do it the right way. Now I'm done. Thank you.
Councilman Troop?
Thanks, Mr. President. Councilman Brzezinski, it's going to be a hard act to follow. I'll keep it short. So while we were talking about, once again, I wanted to always mention Carter's parents, because of what they've done over the years. And just congratulation to him for his accomplishment. I was watching him when he won his fourth last year, and afterwards, they were interviewing. This is how serious I knew he was. They asked him, like, how long will he celebrate? He had just won the fourth. He said, when I wake up tomorrow, I have to get back to work. So he said, I'll celebrate tonight, get up tomorrow, and get right back to work. So congratulations to him. Also, not sure if you guys knew or not, but we have another name from Erie that's involved with big-time wrestling, Tony Robey. He graduated from Strong Vincent. He's the head wrestling coach at Virginia Tech. So when he took over that program, he actually, he has coached two national champions there, and they were the first two ever at Virginia Tech. So I believe the program ended up ranked 11th in the country this year. So when you're watching wrestling, check out Virginia Tech, Tony Robey, Strong Vincent grad is there. Also, one other thing, you guys know that I work at Erie High School. I'm one of the assistant principals there. And next week, wanted me to announce that there will be something called Erie High School Cultural Night there. It's going to be sights, sounds, and tastes. As you know, we have a lot of different cultures represented at Erie High School. It'll be April 10 in the gymnasium, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. It says if you have questions about the sights, you would reach out to PYly@ErieSD.org. If you want to have questions about the sounds, Kay Nicolai@ErieSD.org, or T. Tonelli@ErieSD.org, or taste, R. Kitchen@ErieSD.org. So that's going on next week, April 10, from 5 to 7 at Erie High School. That's a cultural night. So I think it's open to the public. So that's it for me.
Can you send us that information in a message or something?
Yes. I think I sent it...
Oh, he did?
Yeah. I'll send this too, though.
Thank you very much. I'll be very brief. The celebration for young Carter will take place. We just have to work out some small issues. But Councilman Nelson was correct on his dissertation. So was the other council members. We will celebrate young Carter. And if a street sign is what is needed, a street sign will happen. Key to the City will happen. And I have a friend that has a band. I might get him to donate some time. He haven't turned his head, you know?
What front are you talking about?
Selective hearing. But I envision, yes, I envision the street sign, and I think it will happen. I envision the key to the city, but also envision something happening in Perry Square that day, whatever day it is and when it happens. But it will happen. So no, we haven't forgotten him. We will never forget him. Mayor, Assistant Mayor?
Good morning. It's about eighty-five degrees in here, so I'll try to be fast. I just want to thank you all for passing the, approving the flagship grants. As you all know, this was a program that we started back in 2018. Since that time, we've awarded 159 grants totaling over $429,000 for our small businesses, which are really the backbone of our community. And that funding comes from interest off of the revolving loan funds. So it doesn't, it does not come out of the general fund. But it makes a real difference for those businesses that are trying to grow and expand and, you know, make facade improvements, renovations, purchase equipment, do some marketing, you know, improve websites. It's a great program, and we look forward to reopening that soon. Also, large item pickup and paving were also mentioned, but I just wanted to reiterate, large item pickup is a program that we did start back in 2018. And as Councilwoman Flores stated, you can put out up to three items a week. You just need to call 814-870-1550, or go to our website at cityof.eerie.pA.us/largeitempickup, all one word, and you request the pickup. And once you have a confirmation number, you just put out the three items on the same night as your regular pickup, and those will be picked up for free. And you can do that as many times a year as you want. But there has been an increasing issue with people putting out, I mean, we're talking a lot of large items, like seven feet high, seven feet wide piles, where, you know, properties are just being emptied out. They're not calling. And it's creating health and safety issues for our residents. And so, you know, I appreciate you passing on first reading, the ordinance amending, the refuse pickup fees. We calculated, using the FEMA rates, what it would cost for our employees to take our machinery out and pick all that up, take it to waste management, pay the tipping fees and all that. Our cost to do that is about $1,400. Residents, if they need to dispose of things like appliances, which the city cannot take, can get a dumpster for $560 and get rid of all that stuff. So we're really, we need people to use our private trash haulers to get that stuff moved, so that they're not getting, so that the city's not required to do it. We can't let that sit there, because it harms the rest of our residents. But our residents also shouldn't be paying that. We shouldn't be subsidizing people to put out items that they shouldn't be putting out. So this is really an effort to just get people to do the right thing, use the private trash haulers. It'll be a lot less expensive, and our neighborhoods will look a lot more beautiful in the spring. So that, those sweeps will start presumably, if you voted on second reading, after April 16. And our code enforcement officers will go from zone to zone in the city, and there will be a notification. It's not going to be a surprise. We're having door hangers made up. Anybody that has a large amount of items in front of their properties will be notified with a legal notice that this has to be removed within the next fourteen days. If the city has to come and remove it, this will be the cost. And then they will also have a legal notice mailed to them, in case they're an out-of-town landlord that wouldn't see a door hanger. We'll also be continuing to announce this over the next several weeks. And if we do have to remove it, then that abatement fee will go on their next trash bill that comes from Erie Waterworks. So we just want to make sure people are aware of that. We don't want anybody to be surprised. What we really want is for people to just take care of those large items themselves. So again, the number for large item collection at the city for up to three items is 814-870-1550, or by going to the website, cityof.eerie.pA.us/largeitempickup. And then briefly, paving was also mentioned. And, you know, we made a post yesterday about it. You know, we have a lot of areas of the city that have experienced much more seasonal damage this year as a result of the winter that we had, that we really haven't had in quite a long time. And so we are out, the crews are out, they're trying to patch what they can with cold patch, because the asphalt plants aren't open yet. Once those open later in April, we'll be able to do a better job. But for right now, they're trying to get those holes patched. And at the same time, they're doing the annual road survey that they do every year, where they drive every city street and assess the damage that was done, and figure out the highest priority roads that need to be paved. And so we will have more on that in May, once that survey is done and the street list is prioritized, and then they will get to work on paving. But we appreciate everybody's patience. And if you want to call to let us know about a specific pothole, that number's 814-870-1340. Or you can go to our website at cityof.eerie.pA.us/crc to share the locations. And we appreciate everybody's patience, and we thank our city streets crews for doing their best during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Attorney Betts?
I have nothing.
Attorney? All right.
Two attorneys with nothing to say.
Laurie?
Hit that gavel.
All right, hit the gavel. Thank you very much. Meetings adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:05 AM. Members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Titus, and Troop. Titus, and Troop.